We're gonna start off with approval for the last month's meeting. Did we meet last month? The last? Do we have any meetings?
Yeah.
March seventeen. Yeah. Approval of those meetings, those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Motion passed. Okay, let's crank it up with, uh...
Mr. Chairman, uh, just so you know, around eleven-ten this morning, I need to leave. I've got another appointment that I can't miss.
Oh. You said your priority, son. Well, we'll crank it up and hope they'll be here for it. Ready? ZV five oh three oh. Two seven five Harriediggers Boulevard. This applicant is requesting a variance to P A W S P D text. G C thirty-four ninety-nine requirement of two parking spaces per residential unit and requesting one point five spaces per unit. Parcel ID oh three dash one five oh two three, Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Bill Hale Southern Land Partners owner. Could I hear from staff?
Good morning, Board of Appeals members. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZV five zero three zero. So this property is in a planned development district, is in what we call the PAWS PD, which was a several thousand acre PD that covers a lot of kind of northern and part of western Glen County. And so there is a parking requirement for projects within this planned development district that it's two, two units or two parking stalls or spaces per dwelling unit. And the request is to decrease that to one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit. And the applicant's intent is in order to preserve more green space and open area on the project and not dedicate as much to parking. So this is a project that did receive site plan approval and, but of course, the site plan approval was, was pending the variance, the variance approval. So they have stated that their hardship is because they would like to preserve some more green space and similar developments that they have done show that the one point five spaces is adequate for meeting the needs of their development. So this is the proposal. This is a townhouse project and they did, as I mentioned, they did receive site plan approval with the condition that the variance is met. And this is off of Harriediggers, kind of near Fox Run. Familiar with that area? So these are your possible motions and staff, our staff is not recommending approval or denial of this. There's not been a recommendation made on, on this particular project. Mr. Brian Hunt from Robert Civil Engineering is here to speak to the project if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
I got one, a couple of them actually. Number one, why is this not an amendment to the PD text taken care of by the planning commission?
So instead of doing an amendment to the planned development text?
Why, yes, why isn't it an amendment to the text instead of a variance?
Yeah, and that could have definitely been another, another avenue for them to go, that they could have amended it specifically for this parcel. And that would require, you know, public hearings before the planning commission and Board of, or in Board of Commissioners. And I'm, I'm not as, I wasn't the lead on this project, so I'm not sure if that was part of discussion. I'm sure Mr. Hunt could elaborate on the choice of going this direction versus amending the PD text.
Uh huh.
But yeah, that's, that's another avenue to do that, though.
Okay. And another little thing, I noticed on the site that there are, it looks like garages included, I got the site plan, garage included with the, I guess you can't blow that up, but it looks like there are garages in there. Is that included in the parking or the, the parking is just the spaces outside?
Typically, yeah, whatever is allocated in the garage is considered a meeting the parking requirements. So if it's a one car garage, and that would be one space, two car garage would be two spaces. We wouldn't also require space outside of the garage.
So each, each one of them's got, already got one space in the, in the unit. So the point five is for all the spaces.
For the, yeah, for the remainder of the open area spaces. That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, anybody else got any questions for staff? All right, well, let's move on to Mr., uh, who was that? Mr. Hunt. How you doing, sir?
Commissioner's Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. Just a little bit of clarity, the, the design that you have shows with, it shows two spaces per unit already. We've, we've designed that we can meet that parking requirement.
Now, is that, I see these, it looks like some space has been blanked out by green.
Yep, that's correct. Those are what we're just kind of proposing in our initial layout to be able to remove and that...
Does that include the two spaces?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Does that include the two spaces?
That the green includes the two spaces. If that green was then gray, that would be additional parking, that would be, that would, would fit the two spaces per unit. This developer has many develops, developments across the southeast. Their own metrics and numbers show that they don't have, that they don't need the number of parking spaces that the, the zoning requires. The reason we went through the variance as opposed to getting it rezoned is because that's what the zoning ordinance says, that in order for, to get a reduction in the parking, that we can go through the, this, this process to get it done. There is a percentage that the staff level has to be able to reduce the parking. Anything above that level, we have to go through the Board of Appeals in order to get a reduction in the parking. And again, I think the, the hardship on this is that there's not really a hardship. I think that we have, we show that we can meet the parking that's required per the zoning ordinance. Their own metrics for their developments that they have all through the southeast shows that that is overkill on the parking. And I think it'd be better use of this site if that we were just be able to reduce that so that we don't, don't have a sea of asphalt out there. I think that they're, they, they better understand the needs of their, their residents and what it's gonna require. And so we're just asking that we just save, save some green space and allow for reduction in the parking.
One question, it, just looking down the road, not, you know, trust their metrics if they do that, that's what they do. The spaces that are gonna be removed, the ones in green, if in a situation further down, because it appears, looks like most of them are two bedroom units?
There's mixed one, two, and three.
Okay. Would the potential be there to add parking?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. If they, if, if it got to a situation where it was definitely needed, then we show that we have the room that we could add additional parking space on it.
So is this gonna be apartments, condos, or...
It is, so it is apartments. There are townhomes that are in the middle, around the inside of that pond. There are, there are garages as part of these apartment complex, that they have some drive under garages and drive up garages. The, most of them are just a, you know, a single car, typical twelve foot width for a car to get in and, yeah.
Okay. But all of them don't have additional parking spaces outside of the unit. They all have those individual parking lots, I guess, what they are.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So they're, and, and each one, absent, or, not counting the townhomes, the townhomes have the driveway and the car, the, the garage that, you know, they can park two cars if needed.
Oh, yeah, front of the unit, yeah.
But the, the, the apartments, they all have parking as part, per the parking lots that are beside them. Yes, sir.
Okay. So the townhomes, they have two places per unit or is that two units?
Those are two units. There's six units per block, so you can see the six.
So each one of those drives goes into two units?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And then, but there's enough room that a car can park between the end of that unit and the, the, the road. So they can, it'd block itself in, but I mean, that's...
Yeah, but if you had a guest, they could park there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any more questions?
Sir, how is visitor parking figured into this or is it not?
So visitor, so that, I think that's part of the metric that they use for the, you know, one of the two spaces per unit. Again, I think that it is visitor parking, we don't, we don't calculate it in as part of just the additional parking requirements. Certainly, there's ample space that if they had visitors, not ample space, if they have a huge party, like a birthday party or something, they gotta get seventy additional cars in there. But there's ample space for if a visitor was gonna come and visit, that they would, they'd be able to park in there as well.
All right. Anybody, any further questions? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody here for or against this? Could you speak, come up to the podium and give us your name and your disposition?
Well, good morning. I am Richard Salo and I live at one oh four Eagle Crest Drive in Brunswick. As a property owner off Driggers, I'm here to propose the request for variance be denied. The apartment complex planned at two seventy-five Driggers is sandwiched between the Golden Isles Baptist Church and Fox Run Development, and we know there's activity going on at Fox Run as well. It's important to note that this is the, one of the last green spaces left on this section of Driggers. The variance, you know, requirement for two parking spaces is to reduce to one and a half, as we've heard. The existing standard of two parking spaces should be kept. It's keeping two spaces, you know, allows couples to have their own parking space. It will help with visitor and service vehicles. You know, keeping the requirement will reduce situations where people argue over, over parking. And, and it also would reduce this tendency to then park in a haphazard or dangerous fashion. You know, we all know how expensive it is to keep property up, and we've all seen how fast apartment complexes in particular downgrade quickly over time. Let's not, you know, let's not start out with a substandard design. The, and, and as I've heard this morning, there's, there are options to save this, this project from a parking perspective, in my view, from what I've heard this morning. The increasingly, the, the, the number of residences, which is, I'm thinking, part of this whole equation, if we, if we understood the full impact of this development, will exasperate an already increasingly crowded corridor. And so let's focus on the project areas to, you know, to reduce flooding, noise, traffic congestion, and the other things that come with development. I think the current residents and future residents all will benefit if we keep the standard as is. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here for or against this application? All right, well, with that in mind, anybody have a motion regarding this?
I have a question for staff. Um, if we were to deny this, could they actually go back to the planning commission and get it changed, get the PD text changed?
Um, so a couple, yes, I think if I can clarify with Mr. Hunt, so you said the site plan is approved already with the parking spaces? Okay. So I, I misspoke, I said the site plan was approved conditional with this variance being approved, and that's not the case. So it was approved, meeting the parking requirements, so just, you know, so they're asking for this. So already, they have site plan approval, so they wouldn't have to go back to the planning commission for anything. But if, if they still wanna continue to request that parking variance, and they could apply for a rezone, which would be an amendment to the planned development text, and then go back before the planning, Man and Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. So they could still apply for that if they wanna, you know, continue to seek that relief from the parking requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have, well, just a comment. The green space that they're trying to save, the, I, I see it more as they're trying to save money than green space. I mean, I've never, I don't know anybody, if we did a poll in this room, who's got one and a, one car or one and a half cars per household? Very few. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm, I'm a house of three and we got four cars. We got three people, four cars. I don't know anybody, I, I very, I know very few people that have one car per household and occasionally, they have a visitor. So you've got, you've got the room to do it. I just see it as a cost savings to the developer not wanting to spend the money, personally.
Mr. Hunt asked if he could respond to something, is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay.
This is, this is a fifty million dollar development. I think, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in asphalt, it's not a big deal for them. Definitely not looking to save it. Obviously, it does save money if there's less asphalt. That's not the biggest consideration on it. Their consideration is that they have developments that they show already that the need of it. Granted, my house has two cars for three bedrooms. My neighbor has, house has four bedrooms and one car. And what is, what is, what is right in my neighborhood doesn't always mean what's gonna be right for their neighborhood. For this is the development that they're providing, it's one single multifamily mixed use development showing that it's like a mix of townhomes, apartments, some with garages, some without. Their own metrics show that it is. And again, I think we, we can show that we can hit the parking on this, that's not the issue. And again, if at a later date, they determine that it is not sufficient, that Brunswick is just completely overwhelmed them with, with, 'cause everybody has cars and it's not typical for what they've seen, they've got room to add it. They are spending a lot of money to do development in this county. They're gonna be long-term residents, they're not gonna come in, develop it, turn around and sell it. These guys manage and maintain it for the life of this, and they've done really good job everywhere else. They're looking at another project here as well. And short of, you know, it, it's hard with a crystal ball to be able to predict exactly what that parking is gonna look like and people that come and visit. One thing is we did add more parking spaces in front of the amenity center, there is ample parking there. It is, if they run over, they have, somebody's having a party or whatever, there is space for it. I think that the, the, it's not about saving money, it's more about just being able to save. They, they really wanna do what's right for this community.
Well, second question, if we deny it, are they still gonna build it and do the parking?
If you deny it, they have no option but doing the parking exactly like it's shown. I mean, it is what it is. But then we've, as this gentleman said, it was, look, it's really nice green space in there, so let's add more asphalt. That doesn't make sense. It's nice green space, let's let them have some green space.
Let's, kinda on a separate thing, just to help address some of his concerns, what's the, the, shows a property fence or perimeter fence? Do you know what that is proposed?
I'm sorry, what's that?
The fence around the property, do you know what's proposed there?
Um, so the requirement is that it's per zoning, it's gonna be a six foot high opaque or wooden fence that is, is that right, Stephanie? I think that's the requirement. Or a twenty foot type A buffer. I think that there are, we've proposed a fence on it. We're intending on keeping the nat, the nat, uh, natural landscaping on I ninety-five side so that it would be a noise buffer as well. This site is completely wooded, we've, we really don't have a real good grasp on exactly what trees we're gonna be able to keep in there, but we're gonna wanna keep as many as we can in that buffer. And, and actually, both buffers, all the way around.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is this type of development governed by a covenant like a regular homeowners association or something like that?
It's not. It is, it is one owner that owns the entire parcel, they're not gonna be subdivided, it's not gonna be, it's, it's like an apartment complex, except that the, this, this type of development is not the traditional, you have, you know, a bunch of apartment buildings sat on top of each other with the sea asphalt and then a leasing office up front and that's it. They're making it more like a community so that it is some homes, the mixed, and then some, the green space in between.
I, I understand that, I get the, what I'm just trying to clarify for myself is an understanding of, you have referred multiple times that if more parking is required, then they'll, they'll make more parking. And what I'm asking is like, present, three present covenants that I have lived under on St. Simon, that, there, there's no, that's not built into the covenant. The covenant is a document, it's already set, it establishes the number of parking spaces, it intercepts that. So it's not so simple that four or five of us come by and say, hey, Mr. Developer, we need more parking spaces. That's not how it works, not with a covenant.
No, I understand, but that's, it's, it would be the same as if, if in my house, if I needed more parking and our, my kids were parking in the grass, my neighbors would then, as, this is your argument I'm making, the neighbors would then come complain that we're parking and blocking the streets, there's no real tool to make them, to make me add more parking space at my house. With this scenario, they are, they are in business to, to make, to rent spaces. These are gonna be higher end spaces, this isn't a low income, you know, four hundred dollars a month project, they're looking to do high end spaces. If parking was an issue and they are gonna lose tenants, they would definitely add, if they needed to add it. And I do wanna say that the one and a half spaces a unit is not untypical for Brunswick. There's a lot of projects that have apartments that have the one and a half spaces per unit as a standard. It's just that under this particular PD text, it states that there's two spaces per unit, which was written in nineteen ninety-nine. So I think that we've, we've, we can demonstrate that the parking's not required, I can demonstrate that we can do the two spaces a unit. It's up to you guys to determine if, if you, you agree that, that they, they can, they can do the one and a half space per unit.
Changing the subject, just to help me understand, the green on there is present green space or is that green space to be gained?
So as our site plan, what, under our approved site plan, that green is actually asphalt to meet the two parking spaces per unit. So what we're proposing is instead of making it parking, that, that area of, we're, the green is not gonna be asphalt, that would then be just green space.
All right, I'm not sure I understood that.
Okay, so...
If it's, if the question's too simple, if I'm not asking correctly, I can stand corrected, no problem. The green on there, what does that represent?
As of right now, that's parking. What we're asking for, though, is a reduction...
The green is parking?
As of right now, that, so in, just for presentation for this project, I have shown that the, if you took that green and imagined it to be gray, that was our approved site plan that we have. And with our approved site plan, we've got two spaces per unit. So what we're asking is let's take that area and make it green space, which is the green area, we'll do one and a half spaces per unit, and we still meet the parking requirement if, if, with the one and a half spaces a unit.
So reducing down the green area by one and a half, by a half space?
No, we're completely, that, that green area will be green space as opposed to...
The green area represents the point five he's taking out.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's a, that's a good way, yeah, that's a good way to look at it.
All right, thank you, sir. For y'all, I don't have...
Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we pass this as presented. I like the idea of the green space, and if, you know, they need it later, they come back and pave it. I mean, it's not, it's, it's already approved that way anyway, so I'm liking the idea of the green space, even though it's a little bit more maintenance for them guys, but, I mean, they appear like they know what they're doing, they've done this numerous times, they've done their studies. So I'm, I'm okay with this.
Okay, we got a motion? Second, all those in favor? Okay. Application number one's passed, or ZV five oh three oh passed. So now we move up to ZV five oh three one, eight hundred Harriediggers Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a variance to R four track PD text, ZM four six eight oh, requirement of two parking spaces per residential unit and requesting one point five spaces per unit and height variance from thirty-five foot max height to fifty foot max height. Parcel ID oh three dash one five seven three nine, Brian Hunt, Civil, Robert's Civil Engineering Agent for Bill Hale Southern Land Partners owner.
Thank you. This is ZV five zero three one, eight hundred Harriediggers, and this property is located on Harriediggers, this is closer to Highway seventeen than the last project you just saw. This is near the Shell Point subdivision. So they are requesting, they have two different requests as part of this application, they're requesting a height variance, the thirty-five feet is the allowed height. They are also in the PAWS PD as well, and, I'm sorry, no, they're not, they're in a different PD. But they, so they're required to have a thirty-five foot height limit, they are requesting to go to fifty feet. And then they are also required to have two parking spaces per, per site, per, per unit, and they are also requesting to go down to one point five, like the last application. So they are in the R four tract planned development. So their, their request is due to wanting to preserve green space, so that's why they would like to have, you know, higher buildings for their units and then less parking spaces also to preserve the green space. So this is the parcel... So this is the parcel. There is a preliminary plat that's currently under review for, for the parcel. So they are proposing a multifamily. And this is just another view of the parcel. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Hunt is also here representing this applicant.
I'm assuming all that, all that shaded area is wetlands? Not on, not on that one. The, the one below?
Yes, it is.
I can't, yeah.
I'm sorry, this one?
Oh, okay. I got you.
Yes, it is wetlands there.
Okay. Stephanie, all that stuff you sent us, I see two indications where, where it says that, one says called for 45-foot building height. That's on page 22 of the Golden House Gateway Plan Development District zoning. And then another one. It also calls 45 feet.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure.
Page 11.
Yeah.
It says, now, this, it says the PAWS district. Maybe I got the wrong stuff. This was the stuff that Cal sent me.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a look at that in the report.
You don't have all these sheets?
I have it on, yeah, on the website. Yeah, that's, I know there's some different height requirements in the PAWS PD. So I know it's something that's, that we've always kind of had to look back at every time a project comes in because it's a little bit confusing depending on the type of the project and the location.
Both these call 45 feet. So, um-
Oh, yeah, I do see that in the report. Okay. So it's actually the R, the R4 PD.
One's on page 11. I think one's on page 22. I think one is the commercial and one's residential. So does that mean they already had the 45-foot? I, I don't, I don't see anything that mentions 35 feet.
Yeah, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, based on, based on the staff analysis of it, it, yeah, it looks like 35 feet is the requirement for this particular site and the type of use.
I didn't see that anywhere.
Okay.
While you're looking for that, Mr. Hale, is it?
What?
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 Yeah. Oh, Brian Hunt. Yeah.
Commissioners, again, Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. This, this is the same developer that's looking on it. That's the one and a half parking spaces. It's going to be my same argument for it. But I couldn't say that I could make the two spaces work on this unit as well. I could say it on the other one. I can't say that on this one. There are some wetlands that this, we're going to have to contend with in order to make this property work. This is the last portion of remaining property on Harry Driggers that's not already spoken for. I know I, there's other land in between there in CB Greer or Needwood. They're already, developers are already looking at that, doing other projects on it. This 15 acres came up for sale. Since they were already here, they were like, let's see if we can make it work on this one as well. The building height is going to be the, the biggest, the biggest ask on this due to the, the, the size of it and the wetlands and meeting parking requirements. The only way to get density in order to be able to develop, justify the cost for development for this is to be able to go up another story. That would then be able to reduce some of the building footprints and then meet the needs of what the developer's going to require in order to, to develop this. That's not, the, the wetlands, we can apply to have them impacted, but those wetlands are part of a bigger drainage basin that's on that, that side. There's already some drainage concerns. We do not want to impact them or add to any other drainage problems there. So we, we wanted to just avoid them as best we could. And, you know, still, we're still early on laying out some site plans or applying for a site plan process for this. I think the, the big hurdle was whether or not we'd be able to go up another story. There is a, there is some confusion. This, this originally, at one point, was part of the PAWS PD district. They did allow for 45-foot-high buildings, but I think it was only for the structures, the hunting and observation towers for that original pause that was going to be the, the outdoor zoo thing. There is an apartment complex that is down closer to the airport that is 50-foot. And we were, I think being far, further away from the airport gives them a little bit more clearance under the FAA. But if they can do it right next to the airport at 50, we're pretty sure the FAA is going to be good with the 50-foot here. But again, you know, I know this is a big ask, but I think that this parcel is definitely, it, it would be a good parcel for the, the end of all of those single-family homes that are coming in, to be able to do some multifamily as well. It's kind of uniquely shaped as it is. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not, I think it'd be a good spot for, for the multifamily project.
Well, the passage I'm talking about says building height to be no greater than 45 feet with the section of observation towers, which will be determined as an, on an as-needed basis.
Yes, sir. And that's part of the PAWS PD text. This is one is that's under the R4. That was the origi- that was, I think this was-
So, yeah, this was an amendment to the, to the PAWS PD. And so it looks like the older one may have been attached to your staff report, not the one that was updated really just about a year ago. But the, the one that was the amendment did not include an actual height requirement. So in these kind of cases, we have to go back to the previous one to, to figure out what the height's allowed for the site.
So it had 45, and you went back to 35, and he wants to go back to 45, or 50?
Yeah. 50. Yeah, 50 is the request.
That's 15-foot improvement. That's a little more than a story.
Yeah, but our, our analysis has been that 35 feet is what is the, is the max that would be allowed for this property. So it would be a 15-foot request to go higher.
But you don't have, the staff has no recommendation on this one either.
Um, no, staff did not recommend on this one.
Okay. I've got a question for Brian. I realize we're kind of early in the game. I, I personally would kind of like to see a little bit more of a site plan, just so we can kind of, you know, help visualize what we can or you can make work there. Would it, is, is there something that the, the client might, would want to pursue? Say if we deferred it to next month, to give us time to pers- something, put something together so we can kind of visually see how we're thinking about the number of buildings and-
Yeah.
Just to help us visualize.
I think that would, that would be fine. Yes, sir. I think we could do that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody here for or against this project or this application? All right. Well, in that case, talk amongst ourselves here and decide what we want to do. Do you want to make a motion to, to defer?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we defer ZV 5031 to our next scheduled meeting to give the client time to put together at least some sort of proposed, proposed site plan, just so we can visualize and see exactly what we're looking at parking-wise and how it would better impact the space.
All right. I have a motion.
I'll second.
Oh, I got a second. All of us in favor? Unanimous. Unanimous. You know the word.
And, and we'll, yeah, we'll work on some updates to the staff report and the PD text and make sure everything that needs to be included is in there for the next month.
And don't, don't say anything that don't need to be included.
Okay. Less is more.
Yeah, bingo.
Thank you.
Just a paper reader. All right. Moving on to, uh, number, where my agenda is. ZV 5049 at 318 Pine Street, St. Simons Island. Consider a request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section 701.5 to allow for encroachment of a proposed house into the front yard setback. The application states that the variance is being requested in order to save two live oak trees at the rear of the property. The .05 property, acre property is zoned R6, one-family residential, and is located at 318 Pine Street, Glen Haven Estates, St. Simons Island, parcel 04-05096. Deidra Stevens, owner. Can I hear from staff?
Thank you. ZV 5049. This is 318 Pine Street on St. Simons. And here's a map of the location. So this particular lot at 318 Pine Street is a 2,258 square foot lot. So it's a substandard lot of record. It's in the Glen Haven Estate subdivision. And so they are requesting a, a set, or variance request to section 701.5 to allow an encroachment of the proposed house into the front yard setback in order to protect two live oak trees at the rear of the property. So there are two 13, there's a 13-inch and 24-inch diameter breast height live oak tree, live oak trees that are near the lot's rear yard setback. Our county arborist did take a look at the site on May 3rd. He did verify that the trees are in fact live oaks and not another species of oak. So our ordinance in terms of regulations on the removal of trees, it starts, it triggers at 38, 38-inch. So both of these trees are under the, the county's regulations on protection of trees. So if it was a 38-inch diameter breast height tree or greater, then they would need to get a permit from the county to remove that. So this is the choice of the, the applicant to preserve these two trees on their property. So the sketch plan for the building permit shows the most intrusive front corner of the proposed house encroaching into the front setback by five feet, six inches. So the site is in R6, and so their requirement would be 20 feet. So they're requesting a five-foot, six-inch encroachment into the 20-foot setback. So here's a survey of the property. Here is the, the front yard setback off of Pine Street. And then this is what their real requirement would be. And these are the two live oaks in question. So this is some photos of the site showing the live oaks at the rear of the property here and here. And so this is their proposal. So again, on the right-hand side of the screen is the front. So this is where their front setback would be because there is kind of an angle to the lot. So they would be basically just making this kind of squared out. And this is the portion that would be encroaching into the front setback. This is the right elevation. And these are the floor plans for the upper and main floor. We did receive a email from a citizen on property nearby, and they do not have any objections to the variance if it is granted by the Board of Appeals. And these are your possible motions. Staff is recommending approval of ZV 5049. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe the applicant, Deidra Stevens, is here as well.
Could you go back, could you go back two slides, please? I just want to see the dimension again. All right. Forty, yeah, that-
This one?
No, keep coming. Forty-two, forty-two feet, something. No, come forward.
Oh, okay.
Next. Right there.
Okay.
Forty-two by 11. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go back to that site plan there. Just before this one, or a couple slides back. There. So the red line indicates the existing setback. Correct?
So the required setback is the red line, correct? That is, that is exactly at 20 feet because there's an angle to the lot.
The approach they're looking for is that triangle piece that's left there?
Yes, sir.
That says setback in the middle of it?
Yes, exactly. So it is, yeah, triangle piece right here.
They're looking for five and a half feet on one side down to zero on the other.
Correct.
Now, see, there, I noticed there was an oak tree in the front of the house. In those photographs, I went by the house, and that's not shown there. But I guess there's no conflict with that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure. I'm sure the applicant can respond to whether that live oak, because it looks like there's two. There's one near the property line and one that, that is in their front setback. Hopefully, they can respond whether they plan to, to keep those.
So what they're doing is they're straightening out the setback there in the front?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any more questions for staff? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is Deidra, can you step up to the podium and let us know what you think about this situation?
Yes, sir. Like, like she said, I just want to save the oak trees. I don't want to cut-
Your who?
Deidra Stevens. I don't want to cut those trees in the back, and I am going to save those in the front as well. And I live next door, so, my house is next door, so.
You live in the house right at Jason's?
Yes, sir. 316.
From Irvin, please?
No, sir.
Okay. So the bottom line is you just want to save those two oaks in the back?
Yes, sir. And have a decent-sized house. The lot was expensive for Glen Haven.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody got any questions for that applicant?
Yeah. It's, it's not so much a question, and I understand what you just said. I've been waiting to ask you this because I did have some concern about, I felt like what was put there, and it was in quotes from you, is that if we don't give you the variance, you're going to cut the true, you, I will have to cut the two large oaks at the rear of the property. And that's been not sitting well with me as I was preparing for the meeting because I'm saying, I wanted to hear from you if you really wanted the trees, and that's what you just said. But I've been struggling with, if you don't give us the variance, I'm not, I'm not interested in reducing my, my plan by five feet, six inches. So I'm just going to cut the trees if you don't give us the variance.
I asked.
That's what it comes down to. That's how I, that's how I interpreted it. Nothing personal. That's how I interpret it. Am I accurate?
No. I mean-
Okay. They have it in quotes from you. That's what I've been struggling with.
The thing is, I can, they, the, the, my floor plan, if I take five feet off, I'll basically have like an eight-foot bedroom. I mean, that's pretty tiny.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do a deep dive on it. I just kind of looked at the general, and I just wanted to clarify it again, make sure I did my figuring correct. That's why I got Stephanie to look at that again. So it's like, instead of 16 by 42, 11, it's 16, if you really want to save the trees, then it's 16 by 37 and a half. Or 16 by 42 and 11, and if you don't give it to me, I'll cut the trees. Okay. I'm good. I, I don't have to belabor it. I just, I've been struggling with it, and that's, that's who I am. So I appreciate it. Thanks. Okay.
Yeah. It's just on that right side because of the way the lot is. Otherwise, I wouldn't have to be here.
All right. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here for or against this application? All right. I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ZV 5049 as presented with conditions the applicant coordinate with the county arborist domain to make sure we protect the trees and the root system of the trees.
Uh, I'll second that. I like, I like the condition. Um, I mean, I, I'm all for saving these two trees. I mean, she doesn't have to do it, but, but she's making an effort, so, uh, I'm, I'm good with that.
It's one of that triangle piece. It's not even whole five six, it's five six down to nothing.
Yeah.
Okay. All of us in favor? All opposed? You got your variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving into, uh, ZV 5047, at 103 Wiley Street, St. Simons Island, consider a, a request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance, section 507, to allow 35 foot high, three-story residence, including first level garage, to be constructed on the property. The lot is a substandard lot of record, and section 507 restricts the residents to 28 feet in height and 1.5 stories. The 12 tenths acre property is located at 103 Wiley Street, St. Simons Island, possible number 04-13308, and zoned R9, one family residential. Larry Bryson, agent for Lance, and Suzanne Karpata, SP Interest LLC, care of Malair Management Owners. Uh, hear from staff.
Thank you. ZV 5047, this is 104 Wiley Street. This is located in the King City neighborhood. So this is, um, on St. Simons, near the village. So the, um, the sound, the St. Simons Island is right here in this location. So this is just a couple lots off of the water. There's a public access at the end of this road, Wiley. So they are requesting, uh, a variance to section 507, uh, point 2B, to allow, uh, the building height on this property to exceed 25 feet, exceed 1.5 stories in height, and also exceed three bedrooms, which are the maximums per this section. Um, this section has these kind of restrictions because this, um, particular property is a substandard lot of record. So it, the zoning on this property is actually R9, one family residential. So minimum lot size in R9 would be 9,000 square feet. Um, this property is 5,100.3 square feet. So it's 57% of the minimum lot area that's required in the zoning district. Um, so that is why these, uh, these restrictions apply to this property being a substandard lot of record. So they are looking to construct a new three-story, single-family dwelling unit on the vacant lot. Um, they are proposing a three bay garage, um, on the first story, and then living space on the second story, and then living space on the third story as well. Um, they are proposing four bedrooms. So here is a survey of the property. So this is, um, sorry, this is not a very clear copy. This is what we had in our, our system, unfortunately. So here's Wiley, and the property is located right here. So an interesting kind of aspect of this neighborhood is, um, the majority of the neighborhood is zoned R6, which would be 6,000 square feet, which this lot is still under 6,000 square feet. Um, but this particular, uh, portion of the block. The majority of King City is zoned R6, and, um, a portion of King City where this lot is located is, is zoned R9. So here's just a zoomed in view of the survey. Again, here is the lot. So the, um, applicants, um, architects have submitted, um, a storyboard kind of showing, you know, existing homes in the area. So, um, so our, so in 20, I think it was 2016 is when, um, the county adopted the substandard lots of record ordinance. And so that's when the restrictions on heights, one and a half stories, and number of bedrooms came into play. So, um, majority of homes in this area were built prior to that, and so as you can see, um, you know, really none of these are one and a half stories. Um, I'm not sure the bedroom count on all of them, um, but they are all, you know, over 25 feet as well. So, and, you know, a lot of them do have that first story garage to elevate above the floodplain. So here is, um, where this particular site is located on Wiley, and, uh, oops, sorry about that. Went the wrong direction. Okay, so here is the location on Wiley Street, and then, um, you hear some images from the surrounding area in King City. So these are the proposed floor plans. So this is, um, the one on the left hand is, um, is the, the site plan. And then here are the different levels. So this, on the left-hand side, this says first floor plan. This is technically the second level because the garage is on the first, and then the one on the right is, is correctly labeled as a third floor plan. And here is the elevation, or elevations. And these are your possible motions, and staff does not recommend approval of ZV 5047. Uh, Mr. Larry Bryson, um, is here representing the applicant. If you have any questions of him, and I'm happy to answer questions as well.
I do have one, actually a couple. It looks like that, so the, the only height that we're exceeding is just the chimney. Is that, all right, that may be a question for Mr. Bryson when we get him up there. Um, but the other question, didn't we, six, seven months ago, have a similar situation, I think 107 Wiley?
Yes, I can go back to that story map. Um, yes, so the, yeah, it was just a few, a few months back in 2021. Um, there was another application for Wiley Street. Um, I think it was maybe two lots down.
I'm thinking it was two lots down, maybe like 107 or something.
And so, um, and that was approved by the Board of Appeals.
I've got just a comment. According, I'm looking at the GIS, and these people bought the lot in 2010. The rules changed 2016.
Correct.
I mean, I, I think we beat the dead fish.
Yeah, and I, I mean, there's been a, a number of properties that have, have kind of been in a similar situation. They've owned it for quite a while, and, um, and then the regulations changed.
It was purchased with a premonition they could do what they've got drawn to do, and the rules changed on the midstream, so.
Correct.
Want to make a motion?
If I can make a motion, motion to.
It is a public hearing still, so you do need to open up to public comment.
One more thing, staff. What, uh, how do y'all decide why it's part R9 and part R6? And it looks like to me the part that's R9 has some, it looks like the R6 should be moved further east or south where that is.
Yeah, I'm not sure the history on that. At some point, it was rezoned. Um, so there must have been, I know there must have been some specific reason at that time. Um, I didn't research that aspect of it to see what, you know, what had happened. But yeah, it's just really kind of one sort of pocket of R9 where the majority is R, R6 around there. Right. Right. Yeah, I mean, some of the other cases we've seen that have been something similar like that is there was an interest in, you know, reducing density. And so, um, you know, there may have been, uh, you know, sometimes it's been county initiated, sometimes it's been initiated by applicants, but, um, but I, I don't know offhand, you know, the history on that. I'd have to kind of look up that, that history of when that rezone happened. Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is Mr. Bryson here?
He is.
Looks like he's come prepared.
Excuse me, one second. I gotta ask a quick question.
Just make, give us a Cliff Notes, Mr. Bryson.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Do you know why the ordinance was changed? From this ordinance here from 2010 to 2016 about the height change? Do you know why?
Yeah, because, uh, somebody bought property in Glen Haven, it's, uh, Baptist Church in Glen Haven, and they were going to, they were going to use all the substandard lots, and they were small lots, so they'll, probably John will introduce this, uh, substandard lot thing to keep you from going a whole bunch of substandard houses in there. And it ended up, it was really Glen Haven, we ended up catching this too.
And then it ended up bleeding over to this, even though all those other houses were, were already there.
Yeah, yeah, once we got through it.
So they got kind of caught up in the dragnet, huh?
Right.
All right.
And, you know, if the people bought, if the people bought the lot before the ordinance, then I can understand just like Richard said.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Bryson, architect, agent for the Hopeful Owners. Um, you know, something just came up. Mr. McDonough just pointed something out to me in the actual ordinance. This is the ordinance for the, uh, substandard lots of record. And it actually says, however, this requirement shall not apply to re-subdivision, re-subdivisions pursuant to this section 802C. This piece was re-subdivided. So. You want to help me with this a little bit?
Is it re-subdivided or are they moving the lot lines over?
It was, it was re-subdivided, right, Joe?
Is he an agent for the agent?
Yeah, he's an agent for the.
I am the, my name is Joe McDonough. First, I'd like to thank you guys for what you do. I know it's a thankless job. Uh, Michael and Cliff, I don't know you all, I'm happy to meet you. Uh, I do know Eddie Richard and AJ for a long time. I've been building on St. Simons for nearly 48 years. I bought this property back in 2010, and when I bought it, it was broken up into about 20 or 22 lots, all very small lots. At that time, we took it to Glen County and re-subdivided it into nine lots. And under the provision that Larry just read to you, uh, it says, however, this requirement shall not apply to re-subdivisions pursuant to section 802. That's what we did. So we're in a, we're in a neighborhood right there that is King City, one of the more expensive neighborhoods on St. Simons. We're adjoining, uh, one of our own lots that's already got a four-story house on it. We're joining another already existing lot that's got a three-story house on it of about 8,000 square feet. And, uh, there is under construction now the, uh, permit or the exception that y'all provided a few months ago for the house that's immediately two lots up to the right of it. So we've only got, after this lot, we've only got one lot left in there to do something with. And it's currently under contract, and, um, it's, um, it, it, it defies reason that you could limit the construction of a home and try to define density by the reduction of the size of that home with this particular, with this particular property. I mean, y'all recall, we, we're exactly the number 10 at Retreat away from the lodge. That's our proximity. You come down number 10 Fairway at Retreat, and we're right across the street from that. Uh, and of course, we're all familiar with what happened at Retreat with the 10 cottages behind, all of which have four glorious bedrooms, four and a half glorious baths, uh, beautiful , uh, construction, and it doesn't make, it doesn't stand to reason that we as property owners never got notified about this change. I didn't become aware of this change until the, the, uh, people that were talking about buying the lot that are in the, in the, uh, in the room with us today brought it to my attention. That was about three, four months ago. And that's when we had to make a decision to come down to, to get a variance to allow them to do what they want to do. So employ upon your reason to, uh, move forward and give us this variance today and, and, uh, let them build a home on it that they, they like to build, and the home that, that we envisioned when we subdivided the lot back in, in 2010 and put it on record at Glen County. Thank you.
Question from. Yeah, so you own the lot now, and you're selling the lot to the, the new homeowners?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, so they do not currently own this piece of property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody got any more questions for Larry?
I want, did, um, is this the homeowners? Question for you guys, if y'all will step to the podium.
Yes, sir. My name is Suzanne Karpata, and this is my husband Lance Karpata.
I, could I, y'all, y'all came for the last appeal we had for, I believe it was Heiss, Shelley Heiss? Was that, wasn't that who we gave the variance for?
Yes, sir, I was here.
The, and I, I mentioned to you then.
Yes, sir.
Don't come back after, you know, don't, don't buy this lot with the assumption that you're going to be able to build this house after, um, and that's exactly what you've done, I think. Or don't, don't, but don't, don't buy the lot with the assumption you're going to be able to build, do what all your neighbors have done. I was sympathetic to Ms. Heiss because she owned the lot at the time, and she got buffaloed into it. I mean, and I, so I, I just, I thought, I just wanted to make sure I had my, my two, two facts together.
You did.
Yes, sir, and we understood that. That, that's why we're here today requesting a variance.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, Joe McDonough still owns the lot, I think, and you're going to sell them the lot to build this house on? Is that, is that, is that correct? Better question, when did y'all buy the lot that you want to put this house on?
We are under contract.
They, they do not own the lot currently. We still, we still own the lot.
Okay.
And to your previous point, back in 2010, we paid $8 million for that site, and then upgraded that site, we thought, by taking 22 lots and reducing them down to the nine that we have. And out of those nine, there's five already accounted for with existing buildings on them, built in the, in the existing manner when we built the site. Now, you indicated a while ago that we shouldn't get caught blindsided, and this is exactly what happened. And we should be able to, we should be able to build on that some type of decent, single-family home. These folks live on the island now. They're moving from one section on the north end down to the south end of the island. They have a, a two-person or two children family, so we know the density. Um, so it's not a density question, I don't think. But it is a question of, of the county coming along and changing something on midstream without any notification to us as landowners that we had lost the va, substantial value of our property.
Yes, and so the reason that we're coming and making the variance is to build a family home on this lot. Um, Glen County means a lot to me. I actually grew up coming down here. My grandfather had, and his, um, surviving wife still have a house on Jekyll Island. My parents live on Jekyll Island. Lance and I were married down here 20 years ago on Jekyll Island, and it's always been our dream to move down to this area. And so when COVID hit, in March of 2020, we had the opportunity to spend some time down here. And now our boy, at the time, our boys were six and 11, and we then had the opportunity to move down here from Atlanta. So we are involved and committed to this community. My husband Lance actually coached 8 and under youth football this fall for St. Simons Island. Right now, he is coaching 14 and under boys baseball for St. Simons Island. Um, our boys are in the public school system here. Our youngest goes to St. Simons Elementary. Our middle goes to Glen Middle School, and, and both are active in activities at the school. And so as, as Joe indicated, um, you know, with two boys, we are trying to build, um, a four-bedroom home, you know, so every child has a bedroom, and then we have room for a guest bedroom for different visitors.
Okay.
And it looks like the only thing, the only thing that's above the 35 foot is the chimney.
Well, it's supposed to be 28 foot.
Yeah, 28 still.
Okay, okay.
The, my, uh, information that I got here says that y'all bought the property in 2010, but staff put my information, I believe.
I want to start. I apologize. Yes, thank you for that question. I just actually confer with Mr. Bryson. So, um, the, yes, the, the gentleman, Mr. McDonough that spoke, he's the one who, who bought it in 2010 and is still under his ownership. Because it was LLC, I, because the application had been signed by, um, the Karpatas, um, I had made an assumption that the LLC was, was them. So I just discussed with, um, uh, with Mr. Bryson that Mr. McDonough, um, has not signed the application. So for our records, he would need to be, he would need to sign that today for this to be granted, because at this point, we don't have authorization from him that he applied for this variance. So as long as we can have his signature on the application today, we can have that for our records. today, we can have that for our records, but that's, that's why I didn't, I didn't, I did not understand that the Capadas were not part of the LLC that owns it, so Mr. McDonough purchased it in twenty-ten.
Does that mean he's making the application?
He, yeah, he would need to, we can have applicant, I mean, we, you know, we have applicants that can make application, but we have to have a form signed by the current owner, authorizing the applicants to make this application, and that's what we don't have on file at this moment, and I just, I just found this out as Mr. McDonough came up and spoke this morning.
All right. So, we're going to jog us on the application, and that means the applicant did own the lot in two thousand and ten before the, before the substandard lot regulation came into effect.
That's, that, yeah, that is, that is correct, yes, Mr. McDonough bought it, I mean, clearly the, yeah, the Capadas have not yet purchased it.
I think you're making Richard happy down there. Oh, okay, all right. Good, glad to hear that, okay, well, to move on with our public hearing here, is there anybody here for or against? I don't see anybody. Okay, we talk amongst ourselves?
You know, I'm the slow one up here, can you help me unravel this a little bit, please, for what was just said? Excuse me for pointing, gentlemen, this sir here owns, he is the gentleman who owns the property, and generally, and theoretically, he's the one seeking the variance today.
That's what it's turning into.
Okay, the husband and wife there.
They don't buy it from him.
Are just public people, they don't own the property yet, they don't own, okay, so it's just this gentleman here, and we're acting on the request for a variance for that gentleman there? Okay, thank you. Excuse me for pointing, sir, I apologize. Jerry, Mike.
Or T R. Okay. Okay, how about a motion? Anybody got one? They have a motion. They're up on the screen, Eddie.
Give me one second here. Okay, um, I move to approve ZV 5047 as presented now that we know Mr. McDonough is going to sign off on, on the application, I mean, I get it, it's a screwed up situation, but under the circumstances, I think I'm, I'm okay with this.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second it.
All opposed? You got your, you got your motion?
And just for the record, I mean, I'm not heartless at all, I mean, but it, it was, and I'm, I'm not heartless to you, Mr. McDonough, either at all, they, they changed these ordinances, and it just, if it was, if you were building yourself a house, I would, I would have, I would have said, let's move on right now, but it, anyway, I just, I don't want us to be a rubber stamp committee, we stamp everything, yeah, let's move on, but at the same time, I, I'm not, I'm not heartless, and I, I know you guys want a family home, and so, so y'all, if you see me in the vendors, don't run over me, but you did get your variance, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I, I agree a hundred percent, but, you know, it's kind of when you, when you, you coach football, if a touchdown is at the, at the, in the end zone and not one yard out, I mean, it's, a touchdown's a touchdown, I mean, a touchdown's a touchdown, and it's when it's not, when you're not in the end zone, it's not a touchdown, so I mean, there's, but I, I'm not heartless, please.
And, and I, I just wanted to add that I abstain, not because I'm indifferent about it, but I'm in a situation where I bought a home with the intent of going back to New England for six months during the year and renting it out, and then the HOA just passed an amendment that said your lease can only be one year, and I'm hung, and so, I'm in the same situation as you, but you have a bigger investment than me, I think, though my situation scared the heck out of me that I can end up, you know, I, I'm facing, I don't know what I'm going to do about the situation, so I just want to let you know, I'm, it's not that I'm indifferent to it, I abstain because it's a real quandary for me, I didn't want to vote against it and feel like that was part of my rage coming out, and I'm putting, transferring it onto you, and I didn't want you to get stuck in the same situation that I find myself stuck in right now, so I just wanted you to know that I take the job seriously up here, and I did not vote because I wanted to abstain because of why I said it to you, and I'm glad it worked out with my colleagues for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that note, I'd like to adjourn to me.